Uh? No? Good evening, and welcome to the first daylight saving timed council meeting of 2020. Welcome to the people in the gallery. So glad to see that so many citizens have responded.
And all in here.
Okay, I would remind us all that we are being recorded. This is put on the town's website, as the citizens now know, and it's there for review. It must be some bleary eyed people watching, the ones that are there. Anyway, you have an agenda that was mailed out to you. What does your wish for the...
It approved the agenda as presented to the person.
And seconded?
Mayor?
Seconded, yes. Seconded, and we have a couple of issues.
I have an addition to under, uh... New business, yes. A notice of motion.
Okay, a notice of motion from Councilor Carver under new business and...
I suggest an amendment to the agenda such that we remove item 6.2, and discuss that agenda item on the next council meeting of March 26th.
Okay.
Does that require a motion, or is that...
No, the motion is there for the agenda, and that would be with those two amendments unless someone has an objection. Okay?
So the agenda just stops at new business?
Yes.
Something after that, so...
Yeah. Okay, we may be... So we have a motion, we have to vote, all in favor. Motion carried. Agenda is approved with the adjustments noted. Let's go to the minutes of the meeting of February 27th, council.
And move if you accept it, uh, seconded.
Moved and seconded? All in... Any comments or anything you have to... All in favor, motions carried, good o. Alright, then let's move on. My agenda back. South Shore Tourism Cooperative 2019/20 Statement Operations. We have Victoria Blakely. Victoria? And Angela Steves.
Hi there.
Hi, welcome.
Hello. Hi. Thank you for letting us come in today and give you a little overview of our organization and our efforts this past year. The South Shore Tourism Cooperative's been around for about, um... Gosh, I think it's been about five years now. I'm one of the founding members, and soon you will see the other members. So we're on slide two. Pretty picture, and look at the beer that's up there at the top. Actually, did everyone catch that? That's alright, that's alright. Crustaceulation, it's all good. So the board of directors, um, we have a great selection of board of directors from across the South Shore, and we do just represent the entire South Shore, all the way from Peggy's Cove up to Clark's Harbor. We do have some advisors as well, and the advisors on the... Yeah, if you can go back one sec, thank you there. The advisors are municipal members that support the directors in our efforts. And this year we have two staff people. We have the festival director, I'll speak to that, for the lobster crawl, Nova Scotia Lobster Crawl, and Stephanie Miller Vincent is our coordinator. Next slide. Our goal for the South Shore Tourism is really to increase the year-round attraction of the South Shore, the experiences, in an effort to obviously get the cash registers running for 12 months a year instead of what seems to be a much shorter season. So certainly looking to strengthen the viability and the sustainability of our businesses on the South Shore, and it stems obviously from tourism and gaining from that.
So if you go to the next slide. So we have 36 investing partners right now, and that's growing on a monthly basis. Every, I feel like every board meeting we have, we've got new partners coming on, which is really exciting, whether it's new businesses popping up or people realizing, you know, the value of it. We have the 36 investing partners, and if you want to go to the next slide. We also have nine of the 11 municipalities represented as municipal partners. So that's quite exciting for us to have such a wide reach.
Who's missing?
We're missing Clark's Harbor and Bridgewater. Yeah.
And thank you for the town of Mahone Bay for last year's contribution. Take you to the next slide.
So here we have just like a list of some of the local partners we've had from Mahone Bay involved in our festivals, so the lobster crawl as well as the Christmas crawl. So we're always excited to have partnerships in all of municipalities. We saw on the front page, Salt Box has been really involved with the lobster crawl with their lobster beer, which is a hit. And so that was, that's a big one, Mahone Bay. The Fat Bike Festival has been on our map as well. We've had Rebecca's, Amos Pooter, the reindeer run's been a partner, a lot of Christmas, the teaser as well.
Next slide. So there's just a list of a few of our KPIs, our key indicators that we use to measure our successes. We will touch on a few of these at this presentation, but unfortunately, we don't have all of it, but we certainly can, I'd give that to you if you need to. But fixed roof room nights, that is something, as well as the short-term campsite. Those are things that the province of Nova Scotia records. Media engagement with traditional social media, and if anybody was part of the lobster crawl and following some of that, serious engagement was happening with Lucy, especially Lucy, our lobster. Partner investment, and then we do pre and post summer surveys with the province as well, and get that information from them as well. The next slide. Next slide just gives you a real overview of the IDNE report and the tourism goal and what we're really trying to do, and that's helped the province reach its $4 billion goal in terms of tourism. South Shore Tourism feels that we help in three or four of these different areas, but really, always in season, that's one of the big ones, and really that is the goal of our organization. A skilled tourism workforce, I'm going to touch on that. We had a project this year that we're really pleased with through the Tourism Association, and we helped with that. And then, of course, building those partnerships. Lobster crawl's a really great example where a lot of different organizations, companies came together, creating really, really great experiences for our guests, and then we can promote those. Okay, next slide. This just gives you a little bit of overview from Tourism Nova Scotia in terms of the stats. So January to October, on the South Shore, we had 46%. And I think the bottom part really kind of tells the story of why we focus on the shoulder season. Only 70% of our South Shore accommodations are open year-round, and reporting an annual average of 41% occupancy. So there's some huge opportunity there, and we've got a slide that can show that in just a few minutes. This just gives you a little bit of dollars behind those room nights sold. You can see that there is an increase year over year, and that would be because of average rate. One of the big things that drives an average rate for accommodations, it used to be my business, I was at O'Gallan for a number of years, is the quality and the value of the surrounding areas and the activities in that area. So it's working, and you can see that there's some great improvements in our revenues. And certainly that trickles down to all different businesses, and Victoria's going to speak to that.
So what you see here is a graph that we really love. So if you read this, you can see the line, there's a big thick red line going through, starting just below the 7,000, working its way up. So the numbers at the bottom are the occupancy rates. Numbers at the top is what it could be if we were open year-round. So right now we are talking accommodation, because that's an easy way for us to show you those numbers. And you'll also see the lobsters, because that off-season, the lobster season, it's huge for the South Shore, and I think a lot of people don't realize that. And we do still have a lot of local businesses open as well. There is a ton of opportunity for people, you know, if we can get, you know, people down here and staying, they're going to be going out to restaurants, they're going to be going to Rebecca's and getting lunch or to the barn, and they're going to be supporting that local community. They need to get gas, they need to get all of those things that support the whole area. So, you know, we have this opportunity to grow tremendously in that shoulder season, and I think it's very clear from this. So if you want to go, and I kind of touched on this already, but you know, when travelers come in, they stay, it's more than just a head in a bed. It's gas, it's local businesses, it's souvenirs, it's going to museums, it's doing all of that. So it's about more than staying at a hotel, which sometimes is the easiest stat to report on. But that money really does come to everyone. A lot more than if it was just a day trip, because that all of a sudden opens two days for you to spend in that local area and explore and learn why we love it so much.
And the other thing is that that bottom is obviously personnel. You know, that brings people into our community to live and stay and pay taxes. Not that anybody that owns a store would be concerned with that, right? The next one, marketing and development. So, South Shore Tourism recognized that there was a need to grow our off-season. We also became very evident that we have something that visitors want on our South Shore in the dead of what we used to call the winter, which is the lobster. Lobster is the number one reason why people come to Nova Scotia, and you can get the freshest, bestest lobster in Nova Scotia on the South Shore in the dead of winter. So why not use that to our benefit? It gives us a purpose of why to come here. We may not get snow in the dead of winter, like Cape Breton does, but we have something even better and a little juicier. So, we launched a three-year strategy plan with the COA's help. We are now at a COA ask of 127,000, just above that. It was a three-year phased, I guess almost two, yeah, about three, a plan. The strategic plan was done last fiscal. We did our accelerated market readiness, which was for partners that we engaged with them. They had their burning questions that kept them up at night, and we helped them with some support in terms of consulting and that kind of thing about how to solve that problem. So we had four partners in the South Shore help with that, or take part in that. And then the implementation of the strategy plan, and we were very, very determined. Though you can probably see the board is very much a doer kind of board. We did not want a strategy plan that's going to sit on the top shelf. So we call it actually an action plan, and that's exactly what we put in place, and we're in the process of doing that. So this is the first year with our strategic plan for the lobster crawl, even though it is our fourth year of the lobster crawl, right? Isn't it the fourth year? Yeah, fourth year of the lobster crawl. So I'll let Victoria talk a little bit about our efforts in the last couple of...
Two minutes.
Perfect. So I'll kind of go over this part a bit more high level, so I can get to a bit more stuff as well. This is just an example of some of the things that we're doing marketing-wise. So, working on the novascotia.com website, social media. We did last year completed the content development program with the province, so that gives us an opportunity to advertise the South Shore. We invested half the money, the province invests the other half, and then they help push it out there to people. We do offer our partners quite a few opportunities with co-op advertising, and there's a list of them there. Newsletters, once again on social media, we have YouTube, we have our blog, which is updated regularly. Our two big festivals, so Christmas crawl, lobster crawl, and some asset development. If you can get to the next one. I think this is a really important thing to touch on, is the travel media. We had 21 press trips to the South Shore last year. 38 media were included in those trips. 27 articles were published, and this is just South Shore, this isn't all of Nova Scotia, this is just our South Shore. A great example, I think, was yesterday, the day before, a great article dropped on the Boston Globe coming to the South Shore. Some Mahone Bay partners, Matthias and Salt Box were both mentioned in that. And that's exciting, like that's international eyes on us, and that's really fantastic for us.
Next slide. I talked earlier about the tie-ins project that we partook in. So the Nova Scotia Tourism Human Resource Council had a project for labor seasonality and wage subsidy. So it was a project where we were offering free training to our operators to partake their staff in and themselves, as well as anybody that was, and this shows the commitment from the tie-ins board as well, is that anyone that is typically closed in the off-season but wants to give it a try and help, you know, try to work with lobster crawl and see what's out there, but they actually had some wage subsidy and some dollars put towards that. So it was a province-wide initiative, but South Shore Tourism, for the South Shore, managed that project, and it's been a really, really great success. The next slide. This just gives you a little bit of the financial side of things. This is as of January 3, 1st. We don't, we're a nonprofit, and our goal is to spend what we make and not a dollar more. And we're obviously a little bit short for it right now, but hopefully over the next two months we'll make that up. At the bottom, you can see that the spend on lobster crawl for our organization was 22,000, and we leveraged that to a $123,000 spend based on our initiatives that we did with partners and cooperative advertising. So quite an achievement on very, very little money, and you can see with just those media buys, those are worth every dollar spent. And actually, I'll let you go to the next slide after that.
So what we would love is, we'd love to have the town of Mahone Bay join us again this year as one of our municipal partners. It would be a $350 investment, which we would love to have you guys join us again this year, so.
And move to the next slide.
If you have any questions, we'd love to...
I just, I have one question, if I could. Is the discussion going on within your group about the potential impact of the coronavirus for on tourism for the South Shore in 2020?
You know what, nothing I can say to date. Our board meeting happens to be on Thursday. I have a very strong opinion, and it will be on the conversation. What the solution is, I think we're all still trying to figure that one out. But it certainly will probably have a bit of effect on us.
Do your statistics show us where the visitors come from? Are they from the US, are they from the west of Canada, or are they...
For the South Shore?
Yeah, for the South Shore.
For the province overall, we can get that information. Ontario, Quebec, eastern United States, absolutely, are probably the three most, and obviously Atlantic Canada.
Oh, questions?
I guess I have a simple question. The 350 is the same amount as last year?
It's the same amount as last year.
And that's all proportional for the municipalities?
Yeah, so typically, what we've done for the last few years is that's the minimum spend, is $350. We actually, I think in the letter, we are looking to see what that split looks like for the future for the municipal members. So if you have any suggestion, idea, please let us know. We used to use the REN. Of course, the REN has now been gone for two years, so we're kind of stumped on that one. We have talked to Mogul and a few other municipalities that have given us some percentages that they use for other projects, and we will probably follow that. But the town of Mahone Bay would fall beneath, so it would go to the minimum spend, which is the 350, which is a regular partner.
Councilor Bean.
What's the scope of the training course? Like who is involved?
Yeah, it's really multifaceted. So there was eMerit, which was, it's an online training, and it was for retail agents, servers, anybody in accommodation, so different tourism sector...
So there's hospitality and the whole...
For the most part, yeah. I mean, the retail one is the one that was the kind of the, that worked really well, actually, and I know that there were some people in Mahone Bay that took part in it. I think the teaser is one. Actually, actually, the teaser, I think, may have taken part with the wage subsidy as well. But really good training, there was some training for eCornell as well, so a real, that's a big spend. And then there were some classroom components that were done within the community as well, so serving at right, alcohol service, health and safety, that kind of thing. And those were done throughout the, through the South Shore as well. Yeah.
Okay.
Just two quick things. Did our funding come out of our grants last year, Mo, do you know?
It's part of, it is part of the grants, but it's where we break it down, the tourism grants. So it's not one of the ones that's...
You don't have to apply by the 31st Amendment?
That's correct.
Okay. You're off the hook for the pay for it.
Yeah.
You were just getting in the line, that's good timing.
Just two things, the, I think that targeted approach on the seafood makes a lot of sense. Like you think you go to Baltimore, you have crabs, you go to Louisiana, you have shrimp, you come here, you have lobster, I mean, that's really logical. Kind of curious about the ferry, and how, is how integral the ferry is to your overall strategy for next year? And if ferry, I've kind of lost track on where we are, other than I did notice a big number next to it in the provincial budget, but how important is that to your overall agenda?
Yeah, um... I look at it as...
Okay, we're all caring together, it's okay.
I, um, I look at it as it's kind of gravy at this point. We haven't had it. We were, we had a great, great season this year. I mean, I can speak on behalf, because I was at O'Gallan at the time. The lobster crawl flourished without it and will continue because it's only seasonal. So I would say it's a minimal impact on our efforts in the off-season, however, and if it helps, it helps, and that's the way we look at it. There you go, that's my stance.
Okay. Well, Councilor Carver?
Do we need a motion to refer to the budget, or...
We can't, because our policy prohibits a motion, so we could either... Yeah, someone could make a notice of motion, that they'll make the motion next time, or we can also, for this, like in the staff level, we can make sure that Luke has it. This is one of them.
Staff will make sure it's part of the budget review.
Yeah, okay. Because it wouldn't be something we'd spend any money on time. Because we, and we have referred things to the budget before, so. It will go to our budget process.
Yeah, no worries, I think that's what happened in the past.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much.
Are they still having problems with their computer getting from the agenda to the elements?
You too, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was great.
Mine keeps saying this site can't be reached.
I had that problem earlier.
It's the Illuminati.
Must, pardon me? Yeah, I did, I checked it, and it says I'm connected.
Which site?
Every one of them, only, I had them. No, but...
Yeah, Mayor, I think I've got the same problem you do.
Pardon me?
Think I've got the same problem.
It tells me I'm connected.
Just getting a white screen?
Yeah.
You too.
Can I just close it and start again?
Yeah, that would be...
Library one.
Yeah. Town of Mahone Bay guest connected, open front. Uh-oh. Guest didn't pay his...
He's gone. We could just blame it on Dylan, oh yeah, that's weird, it's just deleting.
Do we have a hard copy of the material?
It's not printed.
This is the agenda.
It will take a while.
Oh, you're on the other one, are you the staff's one?
There's several hundred pages out, it will take a while.
Oh, the whole thing, but just the agenda?
Don't bother.
Oh, just the agenda? We do have a paper copies of the agenda.
Some of the agendas here.
You're looking for the details of the library and that sort of thing.
That's right, because yeah, when you get past...
I got it.
If you can get on the internet at all, you can find the full package on the website.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I got the tag.
He's being a computer boot.
You're the same boot, ain't you, John?
Yeah.
Victoria.
Our computer died so fast.
Anybody else having issues with it?
Okay.
I'm okay, but...
I'll send you the PDF for now.
You have the library stuff up.
Yeah. This is the message I've been getting. The web page, the webpage at, and it gives the address might be temporarily down or it may have moved permanently to a protocol error. Okay. Well...
You can't put on the other site?
No, I don't have the, that's the staff one.
That's the one that I'm on.
You're on the staff one or the guest one?
I wouldn't call it staff one, it's just the town.
Yeah, not the one that says guest.
Oh, we had access to the other one.
Yeah. It's the same one as that.
I'll see if I can tell you.
But I don't remember.
Hold on.
It probably won't show it to you.
It wouldn't be on your phone, it's blocked from mobile devices. Oh, I don't like it.
This one here?
Yeah.
So I don't have it.
You already have a password saved anyway.
Yeah.
Oh, you have it saved. See, partway down, town of Mahone Bay.
Yeah, that's what... There's a couple of them. Everybody knows.
Yeah, it's okay, go there.
Just place fat passwords in my personal passwords.
Okay. I've got the agenda, so let me see if there's anything behind it. Let's, we did the tourism cooperative, let's go to the libraries board. We're in business.
There you go.
Okay, we're back.
Please let mine open.
You what?
Mine wasn't responding, I said, please let it open.
Okay, somewhere in this library one was a request. I think.
For more money.
Yeah, surprise, surprise.
Mayor, I'd move that we refer this item to staff to include in the budget documents.
Okay, moved, do we have a seconder? Seconded by Councilor now on the question.
Do we have an opportunity to invite our accounts, our library representative, to come and talk with us at some point?
Yes, he's actually spoken and said he'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Realistically, as far as referring this request to the budget, I don't, even if we had him at the next meeting, I think those would have to be two separate things.
Yes, I understand that.
We can certainly reach it.
You want to just talk about the business that they're in?
Unmake that connection, but it's...
What's successful and...
It's interesting that you say that, because, you know, obviously, our contribution's driven by higher operating costs for the board, which is based on, you know, it was based on five-year-old costing brought up to present date. And the fact that our population is grown, has grown, and this is based on population versus a percentage. So, I mean, it's a good news, bad news story to some degree, but I think that's pretty interesting.
And a good investment at that.
But to your point, one thing we don't see here is we don't see any metrics for, you know, the net benefits, the usage or hours of operation, it'd be interesting to see.
That's the one that's got the provincial government survey in it too, about the whole piece around the libraries. Okay, so we referred that to, oh, on the motion, all in favor. Motion's carried, it goes to the budget process. Let's go to the request from the Mahone Bay Museum to photograph town hall. And they're suggesting that if we could get some people to stand around outside...
And dogs.
Pardon me?
And dogs.
Well, get rid of all the cars and get some people to stand at the various poses that are in the current photograph, although we don't have any balconies or verandas to stand on.
Yeah, a reenactment.
Be a neat idea.
It's a great idea.
A horse that visits the barn.
I have a very big dog.
That's right.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion?
I move that we give permission to photograph the exterior of the building, the town hall, and that we participate, we, somebody, people, participate in the photograph to recreate the original image.
Good idea. Moved and seconded.
Do we need to include the other parts that they were asking for here, like sharing it in their Facebook page and all that stuff?
Good point. I would be happy to include that.
amended, yes?
Include that in the motion. Yeah, in the archival.
Yeah.
We say that we just give them permission to open it up.
To do whatever.
They'll ask for signing, they'll ask for us to sign it over.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, all in favor. Motion's carried, that's a good one. That'll be fun.
That will be fun.
I keep coming back to an MSN homepage for some reason. Got a picture of someone in a top hat. All right, let's go to la prochaine.
Mayor, I'd move that we receive and file the correspondence and information items.
Anyone else have difficulty opening the little windows on those mail items?
Yeah, that weird.
Okay.
I do have a question about. Oh, am I seconding this motion?
Did you want to second it?
He made a motion to receive and file.
Yes. Oh, yes, I'll second the motion. Then I also have a question.
Now we're in discussion on the motion.
5.4, Monday memo, mentioned that people had visited a biomethanization plant in St. Hyacinth, which sounded really interesting.
Yeah.
Is that worth learning more about and talking to the MJSB about that?
I thought the, I had the impression that it might be a process similar to what Sustain is doing in Chester. Could be, I don't know, but I did see the motion, or the piece in there. Pam Mood, the president of NSFM, and one of the chaps from HR, from HRM, were on the same junket. So we certainly will have a good source of information of what the St. Hyacinth thing was like.
Yeah, well, I, I'm just guessing that our CAO, they know it about this project, and perhaps we could learn more about it, and whether it's something that could go to MJSB. I'm not saying that as a motion, but just as a suggestion.
We can certainly bring that up with Dylan and Catherine as well. So, yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. Let's move on. All in favor. Motion's carried. Staff report to council.
So.
Over to you.
As per, well, this is only the first part. So there were very few additions from last time that don't have little stars beside them. But if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to at least do my best. And the full report will be updated at the end of the month.
I guess it's only been 10 days since the last meeting.
Exactly. Actually, there's one, I'll draw your attention to number 14. Schedule the public information meeting to discuss the special events permitting. So I sent an email to everyone today. Really, that was booked based on, we want to get that done. We need to get the permitting sorted out, so we can also address the temporary vending, because permitting is currently handled in the temporary vending bylaw. So if we're going to break those apart, we need to have a place to go with each of them. And really, basically, last night, I was able to confirm that we could get the ad in the paper to run this week, so therefore, that's the date was set, so. So we've got it, that'll be on Wednesday, next Wednesday, the 18th at noon.
Counselor Carver?
Yes, I just had a question about the status of the public engagement policy under the bylaw, the bylaw section number four.
I don't know where, how he's classifying that, I'm sorry. Not a, not with that. I think that's part of our overall plan, that we're working with Sky Sale to get those pieces, that communication out in the public and that sort of thing. But I can't, can't give a solid answer on that. I can ask the CAO to follow up a little bit.
When he does, if he can follow up with a note to all, to all of council, please.
I have another question, may I?
Oh.
Oh, sorry.
Counselor Bane.
Well, no, I'm just going back to the information session, don't we? So then, we've given the bylaw, it's going to be discussed.
So at this.
What is it, are we discussing content?
I mean, I will be attending.
So at this point, we have identified areas in the last staff report as well. There are some areas that really we need to get into when we talk about how we permit special events in the town. So we want to have that open for the public to come in. When we had the public information meeting about the temporary vending bylaw, I was really very happy with the amount of people that came out, and we had a really great constructive conversation, I thought. So I'd like to do that again. Certainly, we've been discussing events. I've been discussing it for years, and we've had, we've had a really great conversation that's been happening with the events working group in town, and we'll be following up with council on that, I think, at the end of the month. So this is just an opportunity, we want to get as many comments as we can, because we're breaking new ground, really, for us.
Okay, I may have read memo a little bit too quickly. He's going to be in town hall?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I assumed. It just said town. That's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Carver?
Yes, it's just a question around the code red statistics.
Yes.
So the numbers that we have here for the end of January 2020, for all of those sections, are those registrations during that period? Or is that, are those totals? What are the totals?
Those are what's, what the registrations are for each of those categories. It's a very hard thing to quantify, because what we see is that, if you recall, we set this up days before Hurricane Dorian, and the stories came out that weekend about the people that said, this is a great idea. And then we sent out a message on code red, and their cell phone, and their home phone, and their email, and their texts were all dinging at once. And people were saying, okay, well, too much. So we're still seeing our numbers change quite a bit while people decide what they, what's their better method of communication. And what we're seeing a lot of, and I'm basing this on conversations I have with people that did not opt to have a managed account, because when you go in, you can choose to have a managed account, and you can change it yourself, or you can just choose to sign up. So we get those phone calls if someone wants to change it. And someone will say, okay, everything's ringing, I just, I only want to text, or I only want to whatever. So things are shifting a lot, and it's making those numbers hard to quantify as we go through. I will say, the staff at Anso are very patient with me when I ask all the same questions at the end of every month. So I think that is what we're seeing.
But do we know how many individuals have actually signed up? We can't figure that out from this data?
No, because you sign up, you can have any number of different things. You could have more than one home phone. You could have, I could choose to have a call to my home landline, my desk phone, my cell phone, my work cell. So we don't see that, because you could have more than one person sign up for a specific address, too.
That's a problem. I would like to know how many, how many households, how many citizens in the town are signed up. And we can't. With the penetration limit.
You know, whether I'm signed up for one, or I'm signed up for five different modes of communications, I would still be counting as one.
Yeah. You don't, you don't even have to, my understanding was that you didn't even, don't even have to be from Mahone Bay to sign up for the service.
No, apparently not, no.
So, yeah.
Well, and that's something that's actually.
If you're a code red community, and you're signed up here, you're also signed up when you're in Fort Lauderdale, and you're on your winter vacation, if that geography has the code red as well.
And to that, we see a lot of things. Whereas, maybe there's a family member that's in Mahone Bay, and another family member wants to make sure they're looked after, they're cared for. So I could choose, if I were concerned about Kelly, I could choose to sign up for her civic address. And then I could get a notification, so that I could know my friend was going to be without power.
I was trying to find a way to work in the lovely event that was held at the Mahone Bay Center to welcome everyone to Mahone Bay, and everyone, all the councilors at the table were there. It was a highly successful event. There are a lot of new people moving into Mahone Bay. And I was wondering, as these people are coming to town hall and signing up for services and electric services, is this part of your protocol to help them sign up for code red as well?
Terrific. And we are keeping that in the newsletter that goes out. I mentioned at the last council meeting that we're looking at, we've been using a graphic of an older phone, just to sort of get that across, that, you know, your home phone hanging on your wall also works.
My wife and I went to a junk shop and bought an antique phone, and then we got home and realized we'd get rid of our landline. Anyway.
So, I just want to ask again, so there's literally no way of knowing how many households are signed up?
Not through their records. Because you, again, you could have more than one person following the same civic address for a number of reasons. Even if you tracked by names in one household, you could have more than one last name, or, so what they track is the number of calls that are going out. I will say, though, anecdotally, we are, when we lose power, we are getting far fewer phone calls downstairs. It is much easier to manage. It used to be when the power went off, we were all running flat out for hours. It's still busy, but it's not anywhere near like it used to be.
I'm going to make one more kick at the can here.
Sure.
So you mentioned addresses several times. Do they count the addresses for the town of Mahone Bay?
It's, for example, we have several staff people that do not live in the town of Mahone Bay, so they are signed up for this civic address, so that if anything happens, if power goes out or something like this, they get that. So I don't know, we could look at which addresses, I'm not sure, I can look into that.
Thank you.
Why don't you make a motion? Why don't you make a motion for staff to report back to council at a future meeting on finding a way to determine the number of users on.
I will make that motion.
Do we have a secondary? All in favor? Moving on?
Thank you. Mayor, just one question about the pending pack sale, is that still full steam ahead? Or is that, is that, is that next week or the week after that, as planned schedule?
I'm not sure about that. I think I'll get to see. I'll get to see it, to follow up the email.
Okay.
To all of council.
Okay, anything else on the staff report? Okay, let's go to, the expense policy's been deferred until the 27th. Like, my heart's starting to beat fast as we get down. Asset management committee meeting minutes, the draft minutes are there, and the Loomburg County Senior Safety Program monthly report is there. Does anyone have any questions?
Oh, if there aren't any questions, I have a comment. I just wanted to point out in the senior safety report, the, just pay attention to the referral reasons, the reasons why people come to the notice of the senior safety program. It's quite dramatic. Home takeover, romance scams, pet care needs, outstanding property taxes, health wellness, driving concerns, housing, food insecurity, elder abuse, and so on. I mean, it's a remarkable range of reasons and a remarkable depth. And also, just note the extraordinary example at the end of how useful it's been to have an emergency contingency fund. It was a desperate situation that Chris managed, where if she hadn't had access to that kind of cash, literally cash on hand, I really don't know how they would have been helped. And I suppose if they could have not, even so, St. Vincent de Paul was involved anyway. So it was, I mean, it's quite extraordinary, the amount and the ways that help is provided. That's all I have to say.
Have they ever determined numbers around any of these causes for the situations that the people are in?
The numbers, oh, yeah, we have, that would be in the annual report.
They would tell us outstanding property taxes versus driving concerns?
I believe they would be broken down.
Versus elder abuse?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we do have, that should be in the annual report. If it's not, I can, I can ask, because we have used that in presentations that we've been in.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Carver.
You're welcome.
New business.
New business, I would like to make a notice of motion. Based on feedback that I've had directly from citizens of the community, I would like to make notice of motion that council reopen the discussion about the logo, and that I will bring a more specifically worded motion to council in time to be in the package for.
Five days before. Yes. Thank you, Counselor Carver. Okay. There's no secondary required, and there's no discussion on a notice of motion, so we are out of business.
There's no place where German aren't.
We, we should have the email, Carl. I agree.
I will, does he have his laptop with him?
Yeah, it's the one with whales.
Did he take it with him?
No, no, it's, it's his wife's whales is the one that you'd be using. And I'm being a bit facetious, because.
Well, I can imagine Carl sitting out on the beach with less than an hour.
You know what they say, a crook meeting means more time with the press. The topics of the day.
He's celebrating there's a direct correlation between the timing and how much story coverage we get.
I move, but we adjourn.
Move. Do we have a secondary? We're done.